Village Board meeting to order. Roll call.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here.
And trustee Takaoka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Would everybody please stand for pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Are there any, like, any citizens who wish to address the board tonight?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Well, now, I, well, I asked if anybody, any citizens who wish to address the board tonight.
We, we had a, we, were we going to do, we had a motion for a pro tem?
Well, I had already asked if there were any citizens who wished to address the board tonight. And then we could do pro tem.
Okay. No one's coming forward.
Okay, well, now, Dr. Oppenheim can do his motion.
Now, I would like to nominate trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
I will second it.
Motion is second. Vote.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Vote your chair.
Okay, then, there's nothing under village president, is it, under village manager that you wish to address? Under assistant, okay, so assistant village manager patrol?
Thank you, trustee Cook. So, under communications, we had two reports of some recent events that we thought were of great importance we'd like to share with the community. Because we have some young children in tonight, the board was gracious enough to move the communications items up, so the kids can get home, so thank you for that opportunity. The village unfortunately learned of the passing of Grace Arcuri Michael earlier this month. For those that know Grace, she was a resident who loved her community and loved serving Vernon Hills. For many of us, we knew and remember Grace as a member of the Vernon Hills Seniors Organization and as a past president of the Vernon Hills Seniors. She served in this role from 2013 to 2019. As the slides overhead show, there were other versions of Grace that perhaps her family knew more than we did. There was the version as a young lady, a bride, and as a matriarch of a great family. Grace was the mother to two children, Sue and Chrissy, five grandchildren, Charlotte, Billy, Lexi, Sierra, and Pierce, and two great-grandchildren who are with us tonight, Jax and Peyton. Many of Grace's family members serve on the summer celebration Vernon Hills Days Committee and are here with us tonight. Recently, the family held a celebration of life, and it was so nice to see so many members from the village and our community attend. And while we are saddened by the passing of Grace, know that her legacy continues through her family and through all who are called for community service.
Okay, Charlotte, did you want to maybe come up and introduce some of the family and maybe say a little bit? Mom doesn't either.
Very shy. This is Jackson Peyton, and myself, Charlotte. I just want to thank every single person who came and helped supported my nana on Friday, or last Friday, or Saturday at Hits. We had about 150 people come through in a couple hours span. She was our nana. We'll always remember her.
Well, you don't have to step aside, Charlotte. Okay. I was just going to say, yeah, she was a great woman. She also was the president of the Senior Citizens Club, I think it was for what, six years?
Yes.
That's correct.
Do you have any?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, correct. Okay. And, you know, I, I remember her and, and your mother, you know, coming and, and your father actually coming up to the golf course, club house on New Year's Eve, and actually having a really nice time together with all the other crazy that weren't attending. So, yeah, she was the plugger, how they actually interact with, and I'm sorry for passing, but she has a great legacy in her family. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming, and we appreciate everything the whole family does for the village, so. Okay.
There's another slide, if, we're going to wait for Mike to advance. A second update that unfortunately we have to share with the board. Is, is everyone in the room is aware, as part of the Vernon Hills Honors Military Banner Program, there's an opportunity to personally visit with each veteran and/or service member who is recognized each year with a military banner. The first opportunity is when applicants are selected, and we present the banners to the community. And the second opportunity, which is perhaps a little bit more intimate, is when the banners are retired and gifted to the veteran and/or their family at the muni. Recently, as we retired the class of 2024 banners, we learned one of our recipients was not able to attend our celebration event, as it was revealed that he was not feeling well. It should also be noted that this specific veteran is a centenarian, the only male centenarian that the village has recognized. And perhaps just as special, he served on day two on the invasion of Europe in World War II. To make the situation right and make sure that he was recognized, last week, members from the American Legion and the village went to visit Stanley at his residence. It was a very special moment. Commander Todd Renahan and members of the American Legion were present and gifted Stanley his banner. And another special note to share, as we were heading into the Army-Navy football game, Chief Pat Kreese and the Vernon Hills Police Department created a salute to service Vernon Hills Police Patch, which recognized military service. The chief presented Stanley an Army football cap and his own personalized patch with the Army tab. We wanted to share this recognition as Stanley was a very special person to our community, a centenarian, a veteran of World War II, and a 2024 military banner recipient. And unfortunately, we learned today that he has entered hospice, so just a special note that we stand with Stanley and that we're supporting his daughter at this time.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anything else under your report?
So, under my report, I'm going to give a brief update on a marketing effort, a holiday marketing campaign. Thank you, Mike. As the winter holidays approach, we are excited to share a marketing initiative from Visit Lake County that will promote the communities of Vernon Hills, Libertyville, Gurnee, and Waukegan this holiday season. The campaign is branded the Holiday Your Way Campaign, and Visit Lake County will be supporting each of the identified communities and specific destinations within the hospitality sector by promoting their venues. The target audience is not just Lake County, but a larger audience that surrounds Lake County, including persons who live in Northern Cook, as well as persons residing in Southern Wisconsin. This campaign will include promotion on broadcast media with features on TV, radio, streaming, print ads, along with digital media to be shared on multiple social media platforms. Vernon Hills partners include retail destinations Hawthorne and Melty Farm, along with restaurants such as Perry's, Wickanore, Feather Glass, Slice, Tangled Roots, and Mazziano's. Other exciting venues that we look to promote this holiday season include Whirly Ball, as well as special events at Hawthorne to include visits with Santa, a Pet Night, a Santa send-off, which are all planned. We also look to promote the new Charlie's Hideaway at White Deer Run, where they plan a New Year's Eve dinner party. This Visit Lake County campaign is designed to increase interest and awareness in visits and ultimately spending in Vernon Hills and our participating partners. We are hopeful the Vernon Hills retail, restaurant, and hospitality sector has an exceptional fourth quarter and holiday season. We wish everyone a safe and enjoyable holiday season as they experience Vernon Hills.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anybody else on staff have a speaking part?
Yes, sir.
Director Lyons?
Yes, thank you very much. So, I have a couple of reports on, under my report here, but before I get to that, I just wanted to call out a few of the omnibus vote agenda items. Items E through J are the tax abatements ordinances. These are done each year, and we have been doing them. This ultimately eliminates the property tax that's levied for the village to pay debt service on the village bonds. So, we're eliminating that. The village continues to use the TIF revenues for the TIF-related bonds, as well as general revenues for the other bonds. And then, the cash and investment funds balance report is included for your reference. I'm not going to go into any detail on that right now. And then the fiscal '25 quarterly financial report is also included for your reference. But I did want to do a quick presentation here just to highlight some of the mid-year review so far through October 31st. So, this first slide here, and you also have printouts in front of you if you prefer to look, follow along that way. The first slide here shows general fund revenues. I have the eight top revenues of the general fund. Again, this makes up over 90% of all the revenues in the general fund. And just to get our bearings on this table here, the first column of numbers on the left shows the report through October 31st, 2023, versus the next column to the right is October 31st, 2024. So, we have last year comparative data as well. And then the third line from the left is the annual budget, the full annual budget for fiscal '25. So, at four, $8.4 million, the municipal sales taxes are still tracking behind the pace of last year, and 46% of the current budget halfway through the year. The decline in sales tax revenues we have experienced over the last year or so did plateau in the quarter, so that's good news. Through today, the last three months of sales tax receipts have been greater than the, this time last year. So, hopefully that trend continues. Moving down a few lines to the construction permit fees, finished the second quarter at $373,000 versus a budget of $1.7 million. Some of the slowdown here is, is just anticipation of the projects, the larger commercial projects that we had included in the initial budget. They're just going at a slower pace than we initially anticipated. And again, those are tough projects to identify. These are multi-year, large projects. As we proceed through the year, they don't always play out exactly how we build the budget. So, that's the difference going on there. And then, food and beverage tax, income taxes and interest income continue to perform strongly, so it makes up some of that gap. Be true to the next slide here. And then looking at all the funds, including the general fund finishing the quarter at $18.6 million in revenues, which is at 50% of budget. The motor fuel tax fund did receive about $480,000 in grant revenue that was not budgeted in fiscal '25. This was related to the Lakeview Parkway project in the prior year, which we did have it budgeted then, but due to the timing of when we received this, it came in this fiscal year. Total governmental funds revenue and sources is finishing the midway point at 57% of budget, or $38.2 million. And then when we look at the enterprise funds, golf and metro, finishing at 60% of budget, or $861,000. And that includes subsidies from the general fund of about $450,000. Few quick general fund expenditure category, by category, a few items I wanted to call out here. Personnel, the top line, finished the quarter at $8.3 million, about 47% of budget. I'd say that's right on target for us. If you drop down a few lines to the payment in lieu of taxes, nothing has yet been paid for the year on a budget of $835,000. This is done typically in April, when the general fund pays 10% of the tax increment into each TIF fund. The next line, economic incentives, were under budget by about a million, a little more than a million dollars. Finished Q2 at $4.9 million, and this, this will, this is about where we're going to finish the year up, because the significant portion of the sales tax rebates have been processed and paid. Now, this is under the budget due to the decline in the sales tax that we've been experiencing over the last year or so, so we pay less out. So, overall expenditures of the general fund are tracking about 51% of budget. Just a few other points for all funds expenditures. The total governmental expenditure and uses finished the halfway point at 48% of budget, or $30.6 million. Total enterprise funds expense at 41% of budget, and then capital spending at 457, almost 100% of the budget there is, is done. Budget amendment is needed for, there was three public works vehicle trucks that we did not include in the fiscal '25 budget, as these were approved by the board in prior fiscal years, and funding was in place to purchase these, but we just did not receive these vehicles in time to put them in service, so.
Okay, Tam?
Yes, yes, sir.
Tam, I could ask.
Yes.
Would you just explain when you click, basically, what we're showing expenditures for what, the first six months of the year?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so please clarify when our fiscal year end, for everybody at home watching this, okay?
Yes, sir. So, the fiscal year begins 5-1, and it goes through 4-30. 4-30-25 is our current fiscal year end. And we, I'm reporting on numbers through October 31st of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And again, this budget amendment is an ordinance in the omnibus agenda under item N for further detail. Okay, just some key takeaways here. The decline in sales tax revenue has plateaued during the quarter. New commercial construction pace is slower than we anticipated when we created the budget. Overall, village-wide revenue and expenditures through mid-year, or October 31st, are on target.
Okay.
So, that's all I have.
And once again, the property tax rebates that we're doing tonight, it's a case of, in order to take out the bonds, we have to guarantee that if we needed to, we would levy a property tax to pay them. But since we don't have to, we, we abate it, and that keeps the property tax paid to the village at zero.
Yes, that's exactly right. So, every time we issue a bond, at the time of issuance, even if it's 20 years or 30 years in duration, we have to pass an ordinance in which we'll then levy with the county each year's debt service for that bond. What we're doing is stopping that levy process every year by passing these tax abatements ordinances, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Tam?
Yes.
What, what, how many different financial rating agencies rate us AAA?
We are rated AAA by S&amp;P, S&amp;P 500 right now, or S&amp;P Global.
But are we standard, it's standard and cores?
Yes, that's the rating, AAA. That's the highest rating.
Are we rated by anybody else?
I have not seen a Moody's rating anytime in the, in the recent future, or recent past, no.
Can you elaborate how important that AAA bond rating is for the whole town?
Yeah, so the AAA bond rating is, is the highest rating of credit quality that an entity can achieve.
Okay, and the importance of it is, it affects whoever we refinance anything in town regarding any kind of bonds, right?
Yeah, we'll have the, the best interest rates available to us by having a higher quality rating like that, yes.
So, right at this point in time, what's the lowest interest rate we might get?
If we were to issue in today's environment?
Right.
I don't know that. I don't know that.
Well, okay.
I know our current, 2% is our lowest interest that we have right now in our current bonds. It's around the 2% mark. This current interest rate market is higher, so I would, I would anticipate, I don't have a lot of data behind this, but more around the 5% range, or 4% or 5%.
So, Tam, the 2% rate, the 2% rate is of what, all the bonds that we're abating tonight?
Yes, all the bonds, we are abating all the bonds, and our rates go from 2% to about 3.5%.
Right. So, they're getting, they're, they're tampering, doing an incredible amount of savings in the village.
Yes.
What did you say?
Yes.
Yes, yes, having the higher, higher credit rating is saving the village a lot of money in interest, yes.
Okay, so, is it safe to say we're in excellent financial shape?
I would say so. I would say yes.
That's, that's a good answer. Took many years to get this kind of a rating, so. And just one last comment, we have never gone as a village out to a, for a referendum to pay for anything. Does everybody understand that? That's kind of unprecedented. Okay.
Thank you.
Next item.
Anything else, anybody else on staff have, speaking part, okay. The next item would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through Q? Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any comments or questions about anything? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. There's no unfinished business, correct?
Correct.
So, under new business, first item is approval and passage of ordinance 2024-156, an ordinance amending the Aspen Point PUD to approve modifications to the architectural appearance for Hacienda Real Restaurant, 371 West Townline Road. Director, Andrew, you're taking it?
Thank you. Yes, there's actually two items back to back, both related to Hacienda Real. So, if you could come up again, that would be great. I'll just explain both items and then open it up to questions. The first item is a, is an amendment to the PUD. Aspen Point PUD was approved in 2005. The appearance of the buildings within this area was part of that approval. The modifications to a building that has a prior approval can be handled through the board as a minor amendment to the PUD. So, what Hacienda Real has requested is shown here on the screen. They're requesting to paint the brick and add a accent wall around the main entrance there. The, while the amendment does sound kind of wordy and clunky, at the end of the day, what they're requesting is approval of what you see here. The, the ordinance has a couple of conditions suggested in it. One, that the proposed paint shall be applied according to the manufacturer's specifications, including but not limited to surface preparation and ambient temperature. Number two, the proposed accent tile should be verified as appropriate for exterior use and should be installed according to the manufacturer's specifications. And then number three, that the sign is shown on the exhibit is for illustrative purposes only. The large HR sign that's on the main entrance does appear to require a variation. It would be a second sign on the front facade of the building. So, I've advised the restaurant if they would like to keep that in their plans, they would need to come back for a sign code variation for that. So, they are aware, but they did want to show the intended future appearance. So, with that, I would open it up to the, to the restaurant to explain the plan and to the board for questions.
Thank you. As you can see, we're, our intention is to maintain the architecture of the building in its original form. We simply do cosmetic changes, both the tile and the elevator, which is like an off-white color that you see there. It's just part of our branding. We're very interested in keeping the building in a way that looks aesthetically pleasing to, to everyone in the area, but also the little plaza where we are. So, it's in our best interest to just make it look amazing and appealing. Both of the conditions, we are aware of it. We've done this treatment before, both on painting the brick and also applying this type of ceramic tile to the manufacturer's instructions so that it can be maintained for many years.
Are there comments or questions to the board? Trustee Schenk?
The, when, when do you plan to do all the painting? Because it sounds like, I mean, with the liquor license, it seems like you're going to open within how many months is your goal?
Correct, so we want to do it on the early springtime, hopefully March.
So, as you get into these cold weathers, and I know with certain paints on the brick, there's requirements to paint within certain temperature ranges to maximum adherence, correct?
Correct, yeah, so we always go by the, the rules. There are some locations where we are located at a strip mall where the only approval I have to get is from the shopping center, not so much from the city sometimes, so we can always start right away. In this case, with your approval, we will probably now, there's always some days in, in December that are favorable. Obviously, we're towards the end of the year, but if not, worst comes to worst, we'll just wait till the very end right before we open.
Because the important thing is, is the reason why we are requesting to stay within the specifications of the, of the manufacturer recommendation, because you're going into these winter months, right? And you're going to paint, and it's going to look great. And then, in a year, that stuff starts peeling if it's applied in the wrong type of season. And what we then start looking for is, are you going to be able to, you know, repair those deficiencies, you know? Because sometimes, if you don't put it on at the right temperature, or within the right temperature, you're going to have all kinds of problems. And we just don't want a brand-new restaurant looking like it's in disrepair right away, because then it's a lot of pressure on you, because then you got to start painting to fix it. So, it's very, you know, I don't know, Andrew, how planning and zoning would treat this, or with permitting. What's your opinion on the latest they can go?
I think, I think we would be working with them to possibly heat the surface. Tarp it and heat it in sections might be an option. So, the reason for this recommendation was just to make sure that we had a clear expectation that they'd be in communication with us. The painting itself doesn't require a permit, so this approval was just a way to document that we expect them to, to work with us to verify that they, it's an appropriate time to paint.
Yeah, because that's what we would see, we'd see like the tarping in the winter, and then, right. So, and then, is a porcelain tile, is that your standard at all restaurants? That color and?
This specific one, no. We've used others that are a little bit lighter, so this will be the first one.
So, this, are they all in that green family?
Mm-hmm.
Like that emerald color?
Yeah.
And it's, this is the darkest in all your? It's bold.
It is. It's a very high-end looking, it's, it's, what we provide is like a, it's a guest of restaurant where we do like those special finishes. As you can see, the HR that we propose, which we don't have a problem taking off, with, along with some brass and some stone pots with flowers and the greenery and everything that goes outside. It's, it's bold, but I, we, we guarantee that it's going to look really nice.
I hope the food is equally as pretty.
Oh, that's.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, that's my brother's job. I'm more of the design part, but we promise it's going to look really great.
Other comments, questions from the board?
While the petitioner is up, the second item, we also have a slide. There are two, two different votes, but while, while they're here, I can also just show the, the second request is for an outdoor dining permit. Prior occupant and operator at this location had already constructed this outdoor, this outdoor area that you can see in the aerial photo. Accommodates 32 seats. Hacienda Real is requesting essentially the same, but, and then the, the permit, if it is approved, could just be renewed administratively by staff every year after this. every year after this.
Yeah, that's not new to this building, it's, it's, the area is there, so, yeah. Comments on the second issue from anybody on the board? Okay, uh, then is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-156? We'll start with that one. Motion to approve?
Second.
This is on the architectural appearance.
I, I have one question.
Sure, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, what, are all the redundant hot water tanks going to be retained in the building?
Redundant hot water tanks?
There are four, I believe, is that correct?
Does the petitioner need be to explain further?
Would you mind explaining further which, which ones those are?
He's, he's talking about the backup, the backup hot water.
You can backbeat up. There's hot water tanks, there were, there, I think there was five or six backup hot water tanks, and that was because the, the Chili's, the original in town, we had 160 people get very ill. And then they moved to this new location, they put in, I believe it was six water tanks. Andrew, are you aware of that?
I'm aware, I've heard the story, I don't know the number of tanks exactly, though.
But you're not planning on changing?
Has anybody been in the building from the building department?
Yeah, yes, our staff has been in the building.
And they're not planning on, you're not planning on changing anything inside the building area?
Correct.
No, not in terms of that, yeah. So what's there will be there, will continue to be there, Mayor.
So the hot water tanks will stay?
Correct.
Yes.
And you know what, the reason I'm bringing it up, because Chili's was jinxed. And I don't want anything to happen to you guys, okay? So you got plenty of hot water.
All right, thank you.
Okay. It's the only comment I got.
So we, we have a motion to second, correct? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, then is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-036 about the outdoor dining permit?
Motion to approve.
Second, motion to second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye, motion carries.
Who's responsible for your parking lot?
As far as maintenance, we are.
You are?
Mm-hmm.
Are you resealing it, or do you, do you have any plans for the parking lot before you open?
We've actually, we've already done the, um, what do you call it, so we, we already seal coated it. We weren't, uh, aware that we needed a permit for it, so it already, uh, got reseal coated. Andrew's aware, um, just that the handicap parking lots were painted white instead of yellow, so they're coming back when the temperature is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item is approval and passage of resolution 2024-037, resolution approving outdoor dining permit for Nirvana Wine and Grillery, 700 Hawthorne Row, Unit 100.
And I will be covering this for the staff.
Okay, Director Jennings?
Thank you. Uh, Nirvana Wine and Grillery is, uh, the contract lessie of Unit 100 at Hawthorne Row. It's the, uh, the corner unit at the, uh, west end of, of the street, uh, on the north side, um, of the, uh, the larger of the domain buildings. Uh, the, in, the, uh, unusual, uh, nature of this particular outdoor dining permit is that the, uh, Hawthorne Row PUD had a, uh, tenant storefront, uh, design specification, uh, guideline document. So, uh, the tenant who has, uh, approached the landlord with a request to, uh, to modify the, the outdoor space would receive this document, the guidelines on signage, colors, uh, keeping windows transparent, et cetera, um, new awnings, that sort of thing. Uh, the guideline document is really more for the landlord, uh, to approve a tenant's request. Uh, there are some items in it that we, as a village, do consider to be, uh, hard and fast rules, like, uh, clearance of the sidewalk, that sort of thing. So, uh, the, the restaurant Nirvana has approached the landlord with a request, uh, that requires two different approvals, the village approval for an outdoor dining permit and the landlord's approval, uh, for the design of their exterior space. Uh, so what you see here is the, uh, the site plan view of their outdoor dining area. Uh, they have, uh, a few elements of this that do not, um, that are not consistent exactly with the, uh, the design guideline document in the PUD. Uh, because of the sort of dual nature of the approval, uh, my recommendation for that is to document the, the ways that their request, uh, deviates from the design specification doc, uh, document, uh, regarding the projection of their roof, uh, into an area that's beyond the dimension, uh, that was originally anticipated, as well as the fact that it's an opaque roof and not a clear roof, uh, and then that they would have furniture that would be left out overnight. So the original, uh, design guideline, uh, did not allow furniture to be kept outside overnight. So, uh, it's a little bit of an unusual outdoor dining permit, uh, but that's the reason that it has those additional recommendations in it. So with that, I would actually like, uh, representatives of Centennial to, uh, present the plan.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, trustees and village staff. Uh, my name is Sam Whitebread, Vice President of Development with Centennial Real Estate. Uh, we are the owner-operator of the Hawthorne Shopping Center and thus lead the Hawthorne Row, um, project. We're here tonight with our partners from Nirvana Wine Bar to present what Andrew has just prefaced as the, uh, what we consider an enhanced opportunity for outdoor dining experience at Hawthorne Row. Uh, I think the big difference I would share with you here, when we were in front of you all perhaps three to four years ago, presenting the outdoor environment and the pedestrian-friendly, um, dining areas, we contemplated modest sidewalk cafes. Um, since that time in our lease-up and finding best-in-class partners in the community, we've identified areas such as this, uh, specifically, where there's a, a great opportunity for maybe a more robust outdoor dining experience. So, uh, instead of tables, chairs and umbrellas, we would have, uh, maybe a roof structure that would still allow for some, some seasonal outdoor dining, um, thank you. And then obviously the, the, uh, the existence of the outdoor furniture there to remain overnight.
And then this is directly across the street from the big common open space anyway, correct?
Correct, yes, we, we consider it a kind of an ancillary or an extension of that outdoor, uh, green space, which is our highly activated amenity space.
Comments or questions from the board? Okay. Yeah, actually, when you look at this corner, this will actually be a, a nicer, uh, amenity on that corner, so. And again, like I said, it'll be looking at all the open space anyway, so.
We believe so, yes, thank you.
In that case, is there a, uh, motion to approve resolution 2024-037?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, any comments or questions? Mayor, anything? Okay, hearing none, then, roll call please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk. President Byrne. President Byrne. Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye. That's, we have four affirmative votes, correct? So that would carry, okay, motion carries, okay?
Thank you.
Um, when do you expect this, as long as you got some free advertising, when do you expect this to be up and running and?
Uh, the, the target is to open in the spring of 2025, so.
First week of March.
First week of March, more specifically, so, or, or as soon as possible, so, very excited about the new opportunity here.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we like to make people aware of, of all of the things opening on Hawthorne Row, because it, it's, some of the time, it's a little bit hard to see from Milwaukee net right now with all the construction going on, so, as each of these new things open up, we want to make sure everybody knows, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, so we'll look forward to seeing everyone at Nirvana Wine Bar, uh, in, in March of 2025.
All right, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to give an additional plug for Danny and the restaurant, I was just there recently and, uh.
Vincent?
What's that, Roger? Okay.
No, go ahead.
So, um, so, yeah, yeah, we had a conversation about it, um, he's very excited to be in a larger space and that will allow him to have different types of products, not just high-end, but, um, more casual items and, and, uh, and, and, uh, it's a great place.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, communications, new business communications, anybody have anything? I just wanted to mention, we were at the, at the senior lunch, and, uh, Mike and I went with John and Ed, and it was a, a very, very nice occasion. Um, everybody had a, a really good time there, um, and it was great to see everybody. And, uh, timing is perfect, we, under the capital improvement thing, are we going to talk about the Harvey Lake thing at that point?
Yeah.
Because that, the one question that came up the most, I, and I contacted, um, Manager Timoney, was one of the things people were asking was about what was happening over there, so, the timing on that is, is, is perfect that we're going right into that, but it was, it was a great event. Um, John, thank you to you and, 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 uh, the people that organized it from the senior group.
Absolutely, if you, uh, for one second, the seniors did want me to pass on their appreciation for the funding increase that they received last year to be able to have the banquets. Uh, as everyone's aware, the cost of, uh, having a, a large-scale banquet that can host a hu- 100-plus, uh, is very challenging, and with White Deer Run converting their, uh, their facility into like a restaurant, it was a challenge to find a place, so, the, the increased budget for the seniors was well-received by the board, and they did want me to pass on the appreciation for the additional funding that allowed them to continue to have that, that event each year, so thank, on behalf of the seniors, thanks.
Okay. Any other communications?
So we had, um, the opportunity to host, uh, GMLV Chamber of Commerce Annual Holiday Get Together at Tangled Roots last, when was that, last?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, um, a change in venue from the old Jamison's, and it seemed like everybody really enjoyed it. It was very open, and Tangled Roots did a great job, and it's just really great to see all the local business, all the owners and just all getting together, you know, because, um, it's nice to keep a good handle on all of our mom-and-pop type, um, businesses in town and them communicating. And since we have a really pretty, you know, with Green Oaks, Mundeline, Libertyville, and Vernon Hills, it's a pretty good chamber of commerce, you know, so we're pretty lucky to have them.
Yeah, they do a great job, great job with.
Yep, and I'll pass on a shout-out to Anthony, so Anthony was our host that evening, and as, uh, Trustee Schenk, uh, shared, we've always tried to use the, uh, funding that the village, uh, presents to the chamber to support a family or an independent-owned, uh, restaurant, and so with Jamison's closing, uh, Tangled Roots was new, and we had the ribbon-cutting, as you recall, Trustee Cook and Trustee Schenk, earlier this year, and it was just a greater opportunity to, uh, expose them to all the, all the communities and host it there, and, uh, Scott mentioned, uh, that that was one of the highest-attended events and one of the best events of the year, too, so, yeah, so just, uh, you see the pictures on their website, just, uh, very, very well-attended and very well-received by the business community.
And a business managed by a Vernon Hills graduate.
That's right, yeah, Anthony.
Okay, anything else under communication? Okay, then in that case, is there a motion to adjourn the village board meeting and go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, motion to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned and moving to committee of the whole. So we need the mayor to call it, right?
Mayor, would you like to call the meeting to order, or would you like me to?
Is he there? Not sure if he's still there. Are you there?
Okay, I'll call, call to order the committee of the whole meeting for December 17th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
President Byrne. Trustee Cook.
Here.
And Trustee Takaka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's committee meeting?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Okay, motion carries. Um, first item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of November 19th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to second, any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne. Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, first item is concept discussion, Vernon Hills Industrial Park, 100 South Milwaukee Avenue, Director Jennings?
Thank you. Uh, my preference for this actually would be to have the, uh, the development team come forward and introduce the project, um, and then follow with the staff memo, uh, if the questions from the staff memo don't come up during the, the course, so, with that, I'd like to have the development team come forward.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. How do I work with the slides here, arrows or? Let's see if I can get that to work. There we go, sorry about that. All right, great. Good evening, everyone. Behind me here, uh, the rest of the development team, Barry Misner from the Misner Group, uh, Stort Mills, F Garrison Associates, and then my business partner, Ernie Reinstein, uh, with Wiley Capital, my name's Jason Simon. Uh, we purchased the Old American Hotel Register site, approximately 70 acres, uh, back in mid-January, uh, of this year. Since then, um, we've been working hard on determining our development plan, uh, for the park, um, and how the buildings, the future industrial buildings would lay out. In addition, uh, we've made some improvements to the existing 200,000-square-foot industrial building on-site, uh, as well as, uh, removed, doing our best to help support the office market supply. Uh, we've removed 160,000 square-foot building, uh, that was the Old American Hotel Register, uh, office headquarters, those four stories, that came down a few months ago. At this point, uh, our development team has about 800,000 square feet of completed buildings over the last few years in the Chicago area, and another couple hundred thousand square feet her, uh, under construction, along with the very significant development pipeline, you know, not counted in, uh, those projects there at the bottom where they're six and a half million feet, um, would, would be this bill, this, uh, development as well, another million, so total about 700, 7 and 1/2 million square feet, um, in our development pipeline here, uh, throughout Chicago. Uh, the site is, uh, is really located between, you know, two of your largest, um, industrial parks with Corporate Woods and Continental Executive Park. Um, the site was originally intended as a PUD for, um, uh, expansion of the existing industrial building, as well as expansion of the, uh, office headquarters. American Hotel Register never quite got there in terms of full development of the site, um, and so, um, certainly the location, uh, is, uh, a wonderful one for warehousing and distribution, logistics, um, pharmaceutical-type companies that are in the area, might continue to want to expand here, uh, for their, uh, for their, uh, biomanufacturing and/or just logistics and distribution, um, facilities, and, uh, you know, sort of, uh, this, the development we're proposing fits with the overall, you know, uh, sort of area of what's been developed around it. We are proposing four new buildings in addition to the existing building, again, which, uh, we've made recent improvements to. Uh, these four buildings total about a million feet. Our, our goal would be a phased development, uh, whereby we, we likely build buildings one, two, and three, uh, out of the box on a speculative basis, and then, uh, we will wait for build-to-suit, uh, for the building foresight, or once we get through or once we get through, uh, the leasing and stabilization of the first three buildings, uh, we'll look to go ahead and build two new speculative buildings or a single speculative building, um, on the backside of the site. For now, we have a variety, um, of sized buildings intentionally, uh, to attract different kinds of users in the area and we think it fits well with the demand that, uh, you know, has generally, uh, we, that we've generally seen historically in the, uh, the Lake County market.
Are you building all speculative?
We would love not to. We would love for a tenant to show up and, and knock on our door, but, uh, realistically, you know, if you build it in industrial, they will come. I think, uh, a really good reflection of that is the development that you've seen, uh, Panatoni successfully develop and very close to stabilizing, um, at South Lake Industrial Park, just to the south of our location.
Well, they're not completely filled yet, are they?
No.
No.
Close, though.
What's your occupancy? What, of the, of your assets in Illinois, let's even say Northern Illinois, so, what's your occupancy?
I would say out of the 800,000 square feet that's been, that we've developed, buildings are standing and those are all speculative buildings. Um, on average, those buildings, uh, are about 50% leased right now. They've been standing for, on average, uh, probably nine months, which is the nature of the speculative construction. You know, typically takes 12 to 18 months to stabilize a project, depending upon its size.
Where have you seen the trend in the last three years?
I'm sorry?
The trend in the last three years?
Um, I would actually say overall, it's, it's really been, uh, the pre-leasing's been pretty, you know, solid, um, and then most of these, like I said, most of these buildings are getting fully stabilized within 12 to 18 months. That's pretty consistent across all the markets and all the building sizes.
Besides South Lake, what do we, do we have anything standing empty in the way of, cause this is the new buzzword in speculative is light industrial, I, you know, I mean, it's, it's like, you know, the, the new, the new hot word, you know, like cryptocurrency and, um.
I've never heard light industrial, like cryptocurrency, but I like it.
You get those buzz, you get those, you get those trends that, you know, everybody jumps on and then, you know, um.
We're gonna, we're gonna steal that from you.
Yeah.
So most, most of the buildings at South Lake are, are, uh, occupied, uh, or close to fully occupied. Only one of the South Lake buildings, the, uh, 630 South Milwaukee is not, um, that's.
That's the newest of?
That's the newest, it's, uh, the highest rent per square foot, um, because it's right along Milwaukee Avenue, so it's not totally unexpected that it would be the last to fill. Uh, we also have 130 Lakeview across the street from the high school, was constructed speculatively and did not fill. Um, uh, that's a smaller building, though. Uh, to my knowledge, that's the, the only two that were spec recently that have not filled.
Okay.
How long has the average lease of the tenants?
About seven years. That's what it blends to.
Yeah.
Larger tenants tend to be 10 years, smaller tenants tend to be five years, and there's a bunch in between.
So when you say stabilized, that's pretty stable if they're committing the seven to 10 year.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
What kind of a tenant do you expect for like a nearly half-million square-foot building?
For what?
I mean, that, that's a rather large, the, Building Four.
Building Four, yeah, but half a million feet.
Yep.
Uh, and, you know, these days it could be a variety of different users, but certainly your traditional warehousing, logistics-type user. Uh, again, I reference, you know, South Lake, uh, they had a variety of sized buildings. I think their largest, and this is my memory, I'm gonna get it wrong, but, you know, roughly 400,000 feet. And, uh, a user that was based in Vernon Hills, a longtime, uh, business that's grown here over time, ended up purchasing that building for an expansion of their own, uh, distribution and warehousing facilities, so, um, you know, it's your, it, you get a very diverse, uh, profile of tenant up in Lake County. Uh, I would say a, a newer trend that we are seeing, uh, partially driven, uh, just by overall occupancy costs, a lot having to do with real estate taxes, is, you know, uh, users that have traditionally just focused in Co-County are starting to take a peak at Lake County as it offers, you know, really, uh, terrific access to the, the highway systems and generally has a little bit, uh, greater value from a, a gross occupancy cost perspective.
So you're more than doubling your footprint just on this property alone of your assets?
In a phase.
100,000 square feet, if once, or, and then some.
For, for buildings that are existing and vertical, yes.
Like by whatever time, right?
Yeah.
Well, total on this project is 1.2 million, right?
It's about 1.2 million square feet.
I mean.
That's right.
Uh, no complications with, uh, residents to the, uh, south?
Not yet.
Well, that was gonna be one of the other concerns I was gonna bring up, the, the more you can get away from those south traffic routes, the better this project would be for everybody involved in the area?
Existing prior, uh, uh, with, uh, American Register, the, uh, residents, uh, didn't care too much for the loading, unloading and how close it was with the existing building.
I mean, correct, and if you look at this Building One, if I'm, is that existing or no? That's not existing.
No, the only one existing is Building Five.
Number five. So are those, just parking, that's not loading docks there, is it? The loading docks are facing west.
That, that's correct, uh.
But where is it? It's all about that traffic along that corridor there, that southern corridor, because they're gonna, you know, it's gonna be an issue. And when you start building all this, I know they got drainage issues into that neighborhood too, uh, that we, prior to, Andrew prior before your time, or Chris, before your time too, it was an issue that came up with the potential tenant that was gonna go in there before. So we need to carefully take a look at all those drainage issues going into that neighborhood.
Well, and that was one of my other questions was, are those within current set, are there, are there setback variances required for Buildings One and Four? Cause they're gonna be the closest, or are they current, as they're drawn here, are they within?
So you're, this is a little bit of a deceptive site plan. The buildings, uh, as, as was noted, are massive. Uh, this is a 72-acre site, so trying to get it all on one sheet of paper like this, you're sort of losing some of the, the, uh, the scale at the, uh, at the margins here, so the, the setbacks do comply, uh, for the buildings themselves. There are some, uh, some variations noted. Uh, there is a, uh, a landscape buffer on the south, um, that is, uh, because it's a residential, uh, district, is a 50-foot requirement in the, um, Continental Executive Park PUD and it's about 25 feet provided, uh, so that does require variation, but the building setback itself does meet the code.
Okay.
You know, you got the trailer stalls, now you got five buildings, now the existing building, I'm not sure how that's gonna work, potentially act, active and I'm assuming a lot of these are gonna run 24 hours, these types of facilities. You're gonna be loading and unloading and de-tag, decoupling trailers. We have to be very cautious of the sound that this thing is, that's generating out of this, so close to that residential.
In the, I guess this would be an appropriate time to hit some of the points from the staff member, then the, uh, they're requesting in conjunction with the, uh, their concept review, just confirmation so that they can move forward. Um, looking for a little bit of feedback on a couple of items. Um, the, uh, the, they are proposing overnight truck parking, which is otherwise prohibited in the, in the BP District. So this has a combination of the, uh, Continental Executive Park RPUD regulations and then the, the BP District regulations that are more specific and newer also do apply. Uh, so, uh, outdoor, uh, trailer parking overnight, uh, is only permitted inside a walled area in the code. Um, the, and then they are proposing, if you look on the west, uh, the west property line, um, there aren't particularly sensitive land uses on that side, but technically that would be overnight parking, that's not within a walled, uh, enclosure. Uh, and then they are requesting the ability to have some amount of outdoor storage. Uh, outdoor storage is prohibited in the BP District. Um, so i- if there is a, uh, a desire to have outdoor storage, any feedback on limiting locations or total size or, uh, what types of materials could be stored, I, I think would be useful for them, um, so they, assuming this moves forward, uh, they would be able to, to plan, uh, accordingly when they go for zoning entitlement.
What do you anticipate outdoor storage for?
What types of materials?
Yeah.
Really driven by a user, uh, but certainly, uh, you know, we would make sure that there's appropriate screening, you know, from, uh, from an aesthetic perspective and then also from a safety.
Buildings this big, why do they need outdoor?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, when you're, when you've got, uh, 500,000 square feet of indoor storage, why do you need outdoor storage?
Hazardous chemicals and gases, probably, right? I mean.
We wouldn't want hazardous materials on, on our site either. Um, so, you know, it's really, um, there are some, there are some materials that are just held outside rather than inside to maximize storage. Um, auto and trailer, you know, parking is, is different than outdoor storage, um, as you note, but it could be any variety of materials, you know, that, uh, certainly we would look at a list of things that it shouldn't be, but, uh, there are, you know, there's probably a long list of very appropriate materials that could be, uh, uh, stored outside so long as everything's properly fenced, uh, secured and aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, but I have a real problem with you having to store something outside when you've got a quarter-million square feet of indoor, or a half a million.
Do you market towards manufacturers? Is this a manufacturing site then?
Uh, there could be manufacturing. We build the buildings in a, in a way that, you know, is really.
Supply and nee- needed power supplies that they would require, cause I think we have an issue with one where the, it's an excessive amount of power supply and you, you gotta deal with ComEd to add more, to bring in more, I think, well, you, more on the technical on it, so. Are you building for that?
So we have, we have given them sort of the, the history of the, uh, the development that you're, uh, referring to there, so that, that is something that they are aware of, that there may be an issue with a particular future user. Um, the, the user, uh, in, in South Lake that required, uh, additional power, it was an exceptional, um, a, a spec building would never put that kind of investment into actually bringing that much power, uh, because it's an, just an unusual load, uh, produced by that particular, uh, manufacturer. But they are, they are aware, uh, that that might be a possibility if one of their, uh, future users, uh, does require a similar kind of load.
So of your other buildings, um, do those have outdoor storage and if so, what, what's stored outside?
Um, a number of them do have outdoor storage and then some don't, uh, mostly depending upon, uh, the amount of, uh, sort of available acreage to us. Some of our, uh, infill locations in Chicago, really it's all, uh, all building and then truck court, there's just not enough room for the outdoor storage. And I'm just trying to think, you know, we've had, uh, in one of our facilities, we have roofing materials, they're stored outside. Um, again, nothing, uh, you know, that, uh, you know, would be offensive or hazardous, uh, but they stack, uh, roofing materials out there. And then, um, I guess any examples from any of your other projects?
Um, so, yeah, uh, so one example is, uh, uh, assembly, so like Clear Channel Communications is a tenant of ours or is looking at a building of ours and they do assembly of the billboards outside, so technically they'll, they'll start assembling these billboards out that'll ultimately go on flatbeds and go out somewhere. Technically, they're storing some of those materials out, so they might also use it for some level of, of assembly. Um, but it's not a big part of, of the usage, you know, it's usually something unique. Typically, users don't want their stuff outside, they want it inside the building, they want it secured. So it's, it's usually a, a unique requirement, so. It's certainly not a majority of the users.
Overnight truck parking, you're probably not talking to anybody that's gonna be running any kind of a, a, like a reefer trailer or that, that needs to be running all night, or?
We don't anticipate it and we, we, someone mentioned a 24-hour operation, I suppose it's possible, but, you know, we just don't see that very often in our buildings in reality.
Because that would be a problem for me if we were going without any kind of outdoor truck parking, if it was the kind of, you know, any kind of a refrigerated trailer or that, that needed to run its unit all night.
Yeah, it would be highly unlikely and it would be more likely that the tenant would want to secure those areas as well because they don't want the, those trailers just open and parked outside.
Maybe another good example I could give is a, a project we recently looked at at some of our North Carolina property, um, Duke Energy, the electrical, you know, provider in that area had, uh, a bunch of outdoor coils for their electrical lines, uh, the actual wire itself. They kept that in outdoor storage rather than inside the building.
Why would they keep it outside?
Fenced and secured and that's just how they, that's how they kept it, um, and desired to keep it. It was about a 250,000-square-foot building with roughly 15 acres of outdoor storage.
It's certainly not the norm. It's, it's not the norm. The majority of users, uh, don't want their stuff outside, so it's usually a unique requirement.
Is there a way we could in a, in a the final, yeah, that anything that would be stored outside would have to come for approval?
It could, it could be, um, just thinking off the top of my head, the outdoor storage could be determined as a special use, uh, that still has to have a hearing. It could be subject to site plan approval. Um, so when this comes back for the formal zoning entitlement, that type of language would be written into it. Um, and, and that way, any future outdoor storage would be handled in that specified way.
I, I agree with, uh, what Director Jennings just indicated. Tonight is concept review.
Right.
Uh, tonight is not a formal approval of anything, including outdoor storage.
Right.
Uh, this is a chance for the petitioner to get your input. Uh, whatever you say regarding the outdoor storage does not constitute approval. Uh, when you, uh, look at the final ordinance, there can be conditions placed upon it. Planning and zoning will place conditions upon it. They may even, uh, they may not recommend it. Uh, you know, so there are plenty of options when it comes to outdoor storage. I think what they're looking for is your initial feeling on outdoor storage.
Well, I mean, I think we should send it to P&amp;Z and then they'll get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, uh, how many of all these are contiguous to this property in Woodbine Estates?
How many homes?
Homes are contiguous, I think that was the question.
One of yours?
That's my question.
I don't have a number.
I don't have the exact answer. I know that that development has roughly, uh, 35 or 40 homes in it in total.
There's about 15.
I guess talking, there's probably seven or eight homes that back up to the existing American Hotel Register warehouse.
There's about, about 13 total. Uh, the last three on the west end are pretty separated, but, um, they, there's about 13 on that, on that road.
Yeah, 16 if you go all the way around the cul-de-sac. That back up.
Okay, 13 that back up to the property.
Yes.
Out of how many homes?
There's about 40 in there.
How many homes in Woodbine?
Probably about 50, Roger, I'm just looking at the map here. Maybe plus or minus five.
So, okay, so other than the existing warehouse building, can you pull up the drawing or concept drawing? What, what building would actually back up to it besides the existing warehouse?
One and Four, out of the drawing.
Yeah, the south end of one and the south end of four. Would both be closer than the current.
So there'd be two other buildings?
Yeah, you're gonna have buildings all along that property line.
Okay, these buildings four are home spine, Building Four.
Say that again, please?
Roger.
Are there homes behind Building Four?
South of it.
South end of it, yes.
There's a cul-de-sac of about nine homes.
Four of them about the
Okay.
South end.
Well, you know what? I mean, you're, obviously there's a concern about, you know, I guess ruining people's quiet enjoyment of their properties, you know, maybe we gotta make the big buildings smaller.
You said something, in fact, that there's a short end of that.
What is it?
Anticipating.
What is it, 500,000 square feet?
Yep.
So.
Well, make it smaller.
So what, what's the height at the, at the south end of Four?
It's a, as proposed, it's roughly 40-foot clear-height building.
Total, is that the height?
Forty.
Forty at the height.
The clear-height, so it could be.
Forty-three feet.
Forty-three to forty-five.
But you said that, but you said it's shorter at the south end, or is that not?
No, well, that's just the short end of the building, so, so that end of the building, I can't see. Here, I gotta look at it here. How deep is that, Jason?
Uh, I think it's, you know, roughly, uh, 360 feet.
Cause obviously the long side of that building is as you're heading off of Milwaukee Avenue.
You mean it's a, it's short in terms of width, but in terms of height, it's the same height.
The height is consistent all the way.
I thought you meant it's like, like staggered, but it's all the same height.
I thought it might be worthy to note that, um, staff was really, early on, encouraged us to pay attention to, you know, what we had to the south of us, so, um, the original building, the existing building, has the docks designed on the south. When they were, when they, American Hotel Register, intended to expand that building, the docks, uh, was expanding to the west.
expanding to the west, and the docks would remain on the south. We intentionally, we were very intentional with our design with screening of the truck courts. You'll see sort of an extra pod, if you will, an extra bay on the back end of each building to help block the actual truck courts. We also were intentional that we did not put any of the docks on the south side of either building four or building one. Everything faces west. And so we have a combination of both screening and also we have, and, and location of truck courts. And then we also have, as Andrew Jennings pointed out, significant buffering. In fact, with the existing building, we maintain the existing buffer that's currently there, which also has some mature landscaping, and then also some, a fence there for both some noise attenuation and also just some overall additional screening.
So you have what Jason was mentioning?
Sixty-two houses.
These little-
And you could put up a, you could put up a, a sound retention wall. If need be.
Remember also, too, the scale of this, as, as was previously mentioned? This little, where the cursor is, that's, that's 25 feet right there. That access road's probably 35, and then this right here is probably about 50 feet additional of green space. It just looks very small because of the scale of the drawing.
We, we just took a quick look.
So, so what are you talking about? We talking 100 feet?
From the, from the end of the building, the short end of the building, the, the wall that's running east-west of the large building is about 100 feet from the property line.
Okay.
Is there a berm there?
Well, I mean-
There's a berm there.
There's a way to screen it. There's a way to put up a sound barrier wall. But, but where are the loading decks? There's no loading decks there, right?
They're facing-
And the south end of the building.
No, they're on the west side.
West side.
Of the west side of four.
Okay.
West side and shielded. There's nothing on the south side of any of the building.
Right, so this right here should act as a shield.
Well, then that's a good thing. Hey, you know what? We probably should concentrate on the existing building that's American Hotel Registers, and ask these guys to flip the loading deck to the north.
Oh.
So, so can I guys, building five?
Everybody could chew on that one.
I, I understand what you're saying. You're saying number, building five, which is the existing building, one of the things previous to American Hotels, that the building, or the loading dock is towards the residence.
Right.
And they heard it 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
So, so has that changed at all, or is that, it's still on the south side of building five?
Those existing, those docks exist on the south side. On the south side still, there's nothing in any of our future buildings that would face south.
Nothing in the future buildings.
That, that built, existing building is the fly in the ointment.
Right.
Why don't you knock that one down, redo it, and put all the loading dock facing north?
I think they just redid it.
They just did what?
They just redid that building.
Cleaned it up.
Well, they've already agreed to that? Great.
Well, no, it's the existing building. They-
No, they haven't agreed to anything. They just, they just worked on that building.
You defined it.
Exactly. It's a beautiful-
They didn't, they didn't move the loading dock to the north.
You want to eliminate the problems with the homeowners, take care of that building, and get, get rid of the loading decks. Make them go north.
And this still has to go before planning and zoning, so.
Right, technical review, then-
Technical review, planning and zoning.
Public hearing, planning and zoning. There's quite a bit of review that-
Then you guys talk about truck traffic, truck, truck flow, truck routes throughout here, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what we're looking for tonight is just a general consensus to-
Correct.
To move on to technical review and your comments that I think you've given quite a bit already.
Okay. I'm good.
So, trustee Shane?
I'm good.
Trustee Mark? Trustee Abbott?
I, I know the residents aren't happy with the, the trucks on the south there as it is, so.
So whatever we can do to minimize, you've, you've heard that quite a bit, so.
I'd say they're all been-
I think they've had our say on the residents, so. They should go to technical review and planning and zoning?
Hey, these guys are the new buyers and developers. Fix the existing warehouse. I don't have a problem with the whole deal. Whatever you want to build is okay, but fix the, the dock doors facing the people to the south. You boys can figure that out. You're, you're spending a lot of money on this project. Give me a break. Do the right thing.
Okay.
And the neighbors will love you.
Well, Roger. Love?
All right. That gives you something to think about.
Yeah, in term, for the petitioner, tonight's not a formal approval of anything. It's the beginning of the process. Formal approval or formal consideration will come much further down the line. After you go through planning and zoning, public hearing, you'll come back before the board with an ordinance for consideration by this board. But you will go through technical review. Your plans will be further refined and looked at, but take into consideration all the comments you heard tonight.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next item is the, the Muni, the Vernon Hills Golf Course, the 2025 rate plan.
Okay, I got a, I, I got a question right out of the box. Trustee Cook, whatever you decide is okay with me, because you hang out there.
Well, but I fit into one of the categories that we didn't reduce, so.
So, whatever, whatever, at top, whatever you recommend is okay with me.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you. Vince Suarez, Vice President of Operations with Kemper Sports. I'm glad to be back here again, talking about the rates for, for 2025, FY '26 season. I've got Mary Kate Walsh, our Regional Sales and Marketing Director, and Kevin Lind, our GM at the facility. So, we were back, we were here earlier, November the 19th, with a proposal on some rates. We were asked by this board to go back and take a look at a couple different options, and also provide some additional data analysis behind some of the sections. One of the things that we were asked for back on the 16th, or the 19th of November, was to consider reducing the resident five-day pass and the resident junior five-day pass as well. So, that is a top, the top graph where it shows the 555 to the 505, and the 475 to the 425. One of the questions that was asked of us was if we did reduce those, keep those fees as is from FY '25, what the financial impact would be for FY '26. I gave you a lot of data in the charts on the bottom here for FY '25 projected, which is this current fiscal year, and FY '26 proposed, which is the next fiscal year. The number of passes that have been sold in each one of these categories, the total number of rounds projected or budgeted in each one of these categories, the average number of rounds per pass holder, the membership cost, obviously, the average dollar per round, and the pat, the total pass revenue per type. If we were to leave the resident five-day pass and the resident junior five-day, junior, senior five-day pass at the current FY '25 price of $505 per pass or $425 per pass, the revenue impact would be $4,400, and that's based on the number of pass, passes that we project to sell in FY '26. I'm gonna pause right there, just if there's any questions initially on the passes, because we're gonna go into a couple slides on pricing coming up next.
So just quickly, so I'm looking at seven-day resident, right? So we're at 650 this year. We generate 13,000 based on 20 passes, right? So 20 times 650?
Correct.
So, and I, and I scroll over here, and you're estimating, okay, a couple less, 18 at 700, and you have 11,000. Is the math right on that?
18 at 700.
I have 12.6, which is-
No, the math is not right on that.
So, it, it works, increased more revenue, right?
Correct.
So the 4,400 is actually a little bit more than that, right?
Correct.
So.
Okay, moving on to the utilization. Mary Kate's gonna walk through some of the utilizations. What we heard was from the trustees, that you all wanted to see what the utilization was, the high utilization, the low utilization, so that we can analyze some of the day parts.
So what you're looking at here on the left chart is total rounds for the public, and this is from April 1st through September 30th. As you look at this thing, green is the higher utilized, red is less utilized. So our least utilized day is our Tuesdays. Highest utilized are Sundays, and that's with rounds in that time period at just below 5,000. As you can see here, on Saturdays, our highest utilized time is at 10, the hour from 10 to 10:50 or so, and then lowest utilized is Monday morning. So, shouldn't be too surprising there. And then on the right, this is our average rate, so it follows our utilized days. So, lowest ADR is on Tuesdays, highest on Sundays, for a blended average of $29.20 for the public.
So these were, this is the kind of charts that we had brought up last week as far as going through with our different dynamic pricing structure and what we had originally kind of proposed going forward, basically with that $2 increase across, with the ability to go up five dynamically pricing all segments. This year, we just did the non-residents, so we'd be incorporated in all the other three. And then additionally, a dollar increase to our carts from 11 to 12.
So the direction that we heard from the board at the November meeting was to come back with a couple different options. Number one, what it would look like with the current $2 price increase, what the pickup would be on a $2 price increase, and then what the pickup would be on a $1 price increase with a $7 ceiling. So, the 2025 original pricing recommendations were to raise the floor, floor rates by $2 across all tiers, to add an additional pricing tier to Fridays, to reflect it as a weekend rate when demand allows. And at a floor, it, it's a little bit difficult because you don't know exactly how many rounds are gonna fall into which category, but we believe that it's going to range anywhere between $11,000 increase to a $22,000 increase floor versus ceiling at a $2 increase. On the $1 increase, with a $7 ceiling across, across the tiers, raise the floor by a dollar, raise the ceiling rate by $3, again, adding an additional pricing tier to Friday to reflect it more as a weekend. At a floor, we, we anticipate it would be a 6,000, up to a $6,000 increase. If it was at the ceiling, at about a $15,000 increase. So someplace in the middle there would be the pickup on the one versus, one and the seven. And I think it's important to note that, obviously, based on the utilization charts that Mary Kate shared earlier, that a majority of those rounds move at the lower rate until you get to the weekends, when they start moving at a higher percentage, at a higher, at a higher clip, so.
So this looks like it comes, it comes out about, just about the same?
It's about, yeah, it's about, I would say it's about a $5,000 difference. If I had to blend it, about a $5,000 difference.
Well, because you went from a, a plus 11, and plus 11, which is 22, to plus 6 and plus 15, which is a 21, so you're gonna be, I mean, fairly close.
Yeah.
And maybe even a little more using the, the second proposed one, correct, with the grids?
If you, if we get to the ceiling, correct, it would be.
When we talked last time, we were, we asked to see the $1 increase to the base and $3 increase on the ceiling. Is that what we were looking at?
Yeah, to try and make it more, you know, more available for residents and stuff at other, at off-peak times, yeah.
So, help me understand the projection that you're seeing in revenue based on this model. Can you repeat that?
So, basically, where we started with our $2 increase, if you took this all across the board, $2 across, we're looking at about $11,000 on our increase in revenue, just staying at our floor level pricing, no dynamically pricing going forward. We could potentially pick up another 11,000 based on demand, bringing it to 22,000. If we went with $1, we're cutting that $11,000 floor down to 6,000. So we really need to drive more revenue to get back to where that 11,000 was. Yes, we do have the potential to get a little bit higher, get able to fluctuate up higher, but the amount of times that that's gonna happen, that's all based on demand and certain days.
Well, that would be a good, that would be a good experiment for us to find out exactly how well the dynamic pricing is working, wouldn't it? I mean, we're our higher end. I mean, if we don't meet it, we can always-
Next year?
Yeah.
So we're relying more heavily on?
And something else to think about is, we've only dynamically priced across one category.
Right.
Now, with this being all four, it could fluctuate a lot higher as far as base, because with our utilization charts, with people playing, that's based on non-residents. If residents are playing, that's a lower rate, and that could be driving up the rate for non-residents as well, going forward.
So you're saying, you're at 15, because the ceiling at $3, you're anticipating a $15,000 additional revenue? So 6 and 15, so 21,000. Am I reading that right? But if we just do it at $2 across the board, you're anticipating a $22,000 revenue increase?
Not exactly. If, if you were at the dollar floor increase, if we were to sell the times at the, at the floor rate, it would be a $6,000 pickup. If we were to reach, call it almost complete utilization, it would be, we would get up to that $15,000 range.
Well, the bottom line on the two comes out almost the same, though, doesn't it? I mean, basically, and, and-
Depends how quickly you get to the ceiling.
Correct.
It depends on that.
You know, I also want to note that on the page with the, with the passes, the, the math was incorrect. If we, yeah, so the total is $78,800 versus the 70, so we're picking up more revenue from the passes than what was the 4,400, so. So, is our goal to test the dynamic pricing to see how it does, how, if it outperforms? If it doesn't outperform, we increase the base rate next year?
I would think that would be one of the things we'd want to see, wouldn't we?
Can't get too expensive over there, right? Is that what we're trying to avoid, right?
And that's what we'll find out with the dynamic pricing, is if we've, if we've hit our, you know, hit our max we can charge, you know?
If you were making commission on the revenue off this place, what would you do?
I'd raise the floor by $2.
And, and what would you do with the dynamic pricing?
I would, with the, with the ceiling, I would take the ceiling up.
To three?
Mm-hmm.
So two and three versus one and three?
Yep.
Can we absorb that? Like, what's the price sensitivity to our golfers on that? Do we have data on that?
Yeah, we have, I mean, as far as the, as far as the curve is concerned, I mean, we, we haven't seen a dip in the number of players based on dynamic pricing moving up. So there is still, I mean, price elasticity, we haven't shown that we're losing players based on the dynamic pricing.
Well, see, what I was thinking is, I, I'd kind of like to see us go with the one and three, and see where it takes us. And if that doesn't get us to where we're equal, then look at going, you know, a little more to the floor.
I mean, I do know with pricing, the elasticity, as you talked about, it ebbs and flows, so the sensitivity can change in a year, right, where you're not gonna maybe do anything. So, look, it's, it's a, it's an asset to the community that we want to make affordable to the community, too. too.
We're talking a dollar around, is that the?
Dollar or two dollars around?
Well, can I just pay you the money now so we can end the conversation?
Well, no, I mean, wait, I mean, if we're talking a dollar around, I'm still understanding.
Penny business, David.
Twenty-eight and thirty-five.
So what are your two scenarios, twenty-eight, thirty-five, and twenty-nine and thirty? Dollar would give us, what's our base round for a dollar?
Okay.
So basically, with this showing with the two dollar increase on here, cut that down a dollar, but we're going to increase our potential ceiling price on the bottom by that amount.
And one of the things that included, they're still, are you still planning on a season cart pass as well? What would that go up?
That was basically going to stay the same going forward with that.
And I'd go with Vince's recommendation. If you really think we can absorb it. To David's point, what are we talking about here?
So which one, Shane?
If they're driving here to play golf, I mean, they're not turning around because of a dollar.
Two dollars, so two dollars increase, and then the ceiling.
We might lose a few people here and there, but you'll make it up for the other one.
Well, and.
It's not like you're raising it five, ten dollars.
Basically, one of our competitors is potentially going away, so.
They've closed, they're closed.
Yeah, they're.
Who's that?
Village Green.
Village Green over in Mundalane, so.
Yeah. Two and three, supply and demand?
Yeah. Because you have had, like we said before, you've had inquiries from some of the leagues over Village Green to move over here. Yeah. Well, what's the board's measure on that?
Either way, we're subsidizing it. So residents are still getting a good deal.
Yeah, I would agree.
So motion to go with the resident, the pass rates as presented, and then raise the floor by two and raise the ceiling by three? Is that the motion, basically?
Okay.
Right?
Is that, is that what we need?
That was your recommendation.
Yep.
I second that.
It's a consensus, it's community, the whole, really not voting on it, just the direction.
Okay.
I consent to two and three.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
So our next step would be likely at our January seventh meeting, we'll bring back via ordinance, the adopted, or the proposed 2025 rate plan, which will have everything on one page, and that way Kemper can begin marketing those rates.
Yeah, and we're all, yeah, we're making the shift to a January one on pass purchasing, correct?
That's the goal, is to start selling passes Jan. one.
But you need to know.
We have the ability to do that?
I think it's a technicality at that point, so it should be fine.
Thank you.
I think we'll still bring.
I have one question.
Okay. Go ahead, Mayor.
This is for Vince.
Go ahead.
If we open a par-three nine-hole golf course in town, how will that affect your revenues?
If you open a par-three golf course in town?
Yeah.
It would certainly impact it, Mayor.
Why are you asking that? Are you planning on opening a course in your backyard, or what?
No, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the young people in town. You don't need, obviously, our nine-hole course is sixty acres. So you could do a nine-hole course on half that, a par-three course, nine-hole, par-three.
Okay. Oh, you can even, you can even do it on less, because I've seen that at Pinehurst. They've done it on.
On the range.
On a range.
You know, I mean, hey, in reality, the Park District could do something like that.
It would certainly impact revenue, there's no question of that.
Okay. So you tighten up this budget as best you can.
Yeah, and our meeting will be January seventh. I don't think you'll get too much of a run on passes between the first and the seventh of January, other than, you know, I can buy mine on the eighth.
The phone has been ringing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Vince, go back and tell Mr. Ludnick about a par-three nine-hole golf course. You know what would be nice? If Kemper actually did something, built something in town.
I'll pass it on.
What, you know how many years we've been your customer?
Nineteen seventy-nine.
You got thirty acres somewhere?
We're one of your first customers.
The first, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
What's that?
The first.
Yeah, we were the first customer.
Okay.
Yep.
So tell Steve it would be nice if he spent some money in town.
I'm not sure whether we'd want to build competition for ourselves, but anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks. All right. Next item is the draft of the five-year capital improvement plan. Who's taking this?
That will be me.
Okay.
All right, so tonight I want to go through a draft of the five-year capital improvement program. The goal is to get some feedback from the board tonight and over the next several weeks, and then ultimately we'll come back during our budget discussions with the next fiscal year's actual capital improvement program. So just to talk a little bit about, brief overview on the CIP, it encompasses all the village's assets, including utilities, buildings, our street and right-of-way, open space, and equipment. I'm not going to focus tonight on our equipment or vehicles, and I will just focus on the capital improvement program projects. So there's a, the selection methodology, staff identifies projects throughout the year that are maintenance issues, improvements that we see. We also get feedback from the board and board initiatives, as well as community feedback, and we take that all into account when we put together this program. There's also several items on here that are preventative maintenance items, items that we need to continue to do every year just to maintain our existing infrastructure, and there's also recommended improvements. So the capital improvement program has several different funding sources. It's not just the capital fund. So these projects receive funding from all different areas within the budget. Here's a high-level overview of the five-year capital program. It's just shy of nineteen million dollars over the five years, which comes out to around three-point-eight million dollars per year. You can see almost half of the program is for focusing on our streets and right-of-way, a quarter is our village facilities, and then the last quarter is all the other categories. Looking at next year FY26 budget, it, there is a, we have this number slightly skewed because we're receiving a one-point-eight million dollar grant from DCO for the CB ditch project. I'll go into that a little bit more later in the presentation, but if you take that out, this aligns almost exactly with those levels. We're at three-point-seven million dollars for in overall budget, and even the facility, street and right-of-way, and the rest of the project breakdown is very similar to our typical year. All right, the way I'm going to go through this presentation is I'll stop on through the different categories, the five-year program, give you a quick highlight of the out-year projects, and then go into a little more detail for the individual projects that we're putting in the budget for next year. So for our streets and right-of-way, a lot of these are recurring projects that you see every year, like our road rehab, our sidewalk curb program, pet safety. But the one project that I'll highlight on an out year that I won't discuss later is the Route sixty median enhancements. We're seeing a lot of issues with the medians between Lakeview Parkway and Milwaukee, a lot of the landscaping, the trees are dying, and also having some issues with the irrigation. So this is not something that we have, that we're budgeting next year. It's an upcoming expense. We want to time this up with some of the work the mall is doing, but this is a project that we have in an out year that we'll have to eventually start working on. To look at next year's projects, so the first one I have here is the road rehabilitation program. So in the, just to give you a quick overview, the village has around one-hundred-and-sixty-five lane miles, and so if we look at, each street lasts around twenty years is the typical resurfacing. So at that, if you do the math on that, we target around eight-point-two lane miles per year. We're right on that level for next year. We're looking at eight-point-one-eight lane miles. We're going to continue Greg's Parkway where we left off this year, down to Lakeview. We're going to do the Sawgrass subdivision, and then we're going to turn our focus into Centennial Crossing. The next project I want to talk about is the White Deer Run Golf Cart Underpass Evaluation. You can see in the picture in the top, there are four different underpasses that go under Greg's Parkway and Huntington. These are culverts that they use to cross under that are starting to show some concrete deterioration. So we're going to fund a project to have a consultant evaluate that and make some recommendations on improvements. Then we'll have those, the actual construction of those improvements in one of the out years. We also, this. Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Now, is that responsibility of the company now that owns it, or, you know, it's got the lease to it, huh?
So the way I understand the lease is that we are everything between the curb lines of the roadways, including this underpass here, but we wouldn't be responsible for the golf cart pass themselves within White Deer Run. But these culverts that go under Greg's Parkway and Huntington are our responsibility.
You know what? And that's good. No, it is good. So thank you for that answer.
Sure. The other highlighted project here is the pedestrian safety and ADA improvements. This is a recurring line item that I'm leaving in year over year, and that's going to be used for miscellaneous safety and pet improvements that come as part of two things. Next year is going to be specifically earmarked for the study that we're working on right now with Civil Tech. They are reviewing the intersections on Fairway, as well as Hawthorne South, and looking at creating a crosswalk policy. I brought that contract to the board several months ago, so the actual construction cost will be funded from this line item. We also have an ADA transition plan that we're working on, where we're going to identify deficiencies within our right-of-way, and we will use this funding line item in future years to continue to chip away at issues we have with accessibility within the village's streets. The next category is preventative maintenance items. These are recurring, they're annual or biannual projects that we do each year to maintain the village's infrastructure. So they're the same, there's not much to comment on for the out years. Just one piece of information, you know, the way, our methodology, one of the biggest items here is this pavement patching. We try to focus on streets that aren't in the immediate short-term list for road resurfacing. What we do is look streets like the one you see in this picture here, that are showing signs of deterioration but aren't in year two, three, four of our road rehab project. Patching is a good way to address the most significant deficiencies, help that street to not deteriorate further, so that a simple resurfacing will be possible when it comes in the future years. So the next category is the traffic signals and streetlights. We talked last year at this time about our streetlight LED program, where we are going to be phasing in, phasing out our existing streetlights for LED fixtures. We talked at that time about funding that out over ten years into fiscal year thirty-three, around a two-hundred-thousand-dollar per year funding level. We're requesting a slight increase to that this year, just based on some of the locations that we're putting the streetlights in. We don't want to completely, we don't want to do half of a subdivision. We like to try and finish the whole area so that you don't have, one side of the street has an LED and the other side doesn't. It can cause some concern. We get a lot of calls. It draws unnecessary attention to that, to the issue. So just based on where the project ends, we wanted to increase that funding for this year. The other project for next year is the Route sixty pedestrian improvements. As you can see on this picture here, there's no pedestrian infrastructure at any of the intersections on Route sixty between Fairway and, or I'm sorry, Lakeview Parkway and Milwaukee. This funding in here would be for engineering services that we would do in conjunction with the mall. The mall's Phase Two has some work that needs to be done on sixty and to their two gate entrances there. So we're earmarking some funds to make sure we time up the project with them. It's basically the same approval process with IDOT, so it would be, which takes around eighteen months to go through. So you don't want to have two of the same thing in together, so we want to time that project in conjunction with the mall's work.
Is Milwaukee also going to be, are we doing anything to look at ways to connect Melody Farms with?
This funding does not have anything for any work in Milwaukee this time.
Can I ask a question, I think Chief?
Sure.
You can ring in on this. At what point, of how many lanes of traffic, having a crosswalk, does it really become a potential liability? I mean, I think I'm looking at, what is, is this Fairway right here? Is that eight potential lanes of traffic that they could be crossing? I mean, is that something that our engineers are, you're going to be looking at with this study, before we start making investments in it?
Yeah, so I would say that Fairway is one. There's no pedestrian infrastructure on the north side of the road, so that one is not an immediate solution or planned project. Something that we're keeping on our radar, but we're not going to put a crosswalk to nowhere. As far as, go ahead.
No, so I mean, like, from the safety point of view, I mean, theoretically, you can put a crosswalk anywhere you want, you can put a crosswalk across highway. The question is, is it a safe place to have a crosswalk that's going to, not giving them a false sense of security of these kids, but potentially kids racing the light kind of thing, trying to get across. Is there an issue when you start getting?
Especially a corner like Milwaukee and sixty where you got two SRAs.
What I'll add from an engineering standpoint is there are some options you have with the light, how you hold the lock signal when you put it up, you know, when you see in places like the city of Chicago, they put the lock signal up before the light even turns green to avoid, you know, people making right turns in heavy pedestrian areas. So there are some options to make that safe, to set the timing to a certain level where there's extra buffer that when it goes to a full stop, the light's not immediately switching and people are getting stuck in the middle of the intersection. I know some people get frustrated when you push a push button, or you get to an intersection, it doesn't have a walking man because they didn't push the push button. Well, some of that is the timing of the signal will actually adjust, because they'll hold it longer than it normally would if there's a pedestrian there, so they have ample time to get across the street.
So Chief, Milwaukee and sixty, do we have incidents there, pedestrian incidents that you know of? Has it been, I mean, that seems the business, the business right there, right?
I wouldn't say it stands out that we've had a lot. We had a tragedy going back about eight years, but at night, a person running across, not using a signal. Excuse me. I don't believe that there's a particularly high level of pedestrian volume there. We certainly see a lot more pedestrian volume crossing sixty and Aspen, you know, with the school of key businesses.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
And I would just add that one of the drivers of this is the residential that's being put onto the mall campus, as we're adding apartments there and talks of other infrastructure. Obviously, with just our shopping centers, with large parking lots, there's not too much foot traffic going from one side to another. But lacking any infrastructure, if you're putting residents on that north side and you don't have anything for them, the last thing we want is them to try and run across the street, because there is no pedestrian options that are reasonable for them to have. So I think that would be the. So, I think that would be the higher risk there.
Well, that was the reason I brought Milwaukee up, is because with us adding all those restaurants along Milwaukee, and adding all the residential on both sides of Milwaukee, that I would think that would be a higher...
So, there are crosswalks on Milwaukee at that gate. These locations in particular, there's no crosswalks, there's no buttons, there's no infrastructure at all.
Okay. Thank you.
The next category I want to touch on is the open space and stormwater improvements. So, it's looking at the out years. The first one that I have highlighted at the top is the Harvey Lake Master Plan. So, that's a project that's funded in this current fiscal year. Actually hoping to bring something to the board in the January or February meetings, awarding a consultant contract to put together a master plan of what we can make, or what the board wants to see from that village asset. I think we have a lot of options there, varying in degrees of how much infrastructure we'd like to put. So, that project is currently funded and the design work will also spill into next fiscal year. But I'm also showing a, I would say, a placeholder of funding for any improvements in that year, fiscal '27 and '28. However, those are all subject to whatever the board, whatever decisions we want to make as the board and the community for that village asset. The next two lines I have highlighted down lower, the CV ditch pedestrian bridge improvements. We have two pedestrian bridges over the CV. One is just south of 60. The other one's just north of 45. Those bridges are older, and we're eventually going to need to have a consultant do an evaluation. And there's the potential for more significant repairs. Right now, it's just annual inspections and some maintenance on some of the boards. But we wanted to keep that on as an out year, just so there's an understanding that some work will need to be done to those bridges at some point.
Andrew, I got a question.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Andrew, on the CV, the CV drainage problem with the $1.8 million grant?
Say that again? What's the question?
My question is, the CV drainage dish?
Yes.
It runs from, I know it starts at Butterfield Road, it runs all the way down to Lake Charles, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's the project that will eliminate a lot of issues with Lake Charles?
That's correct.
And as we spoke the other day, this project will help alleviate the actual plant and other landscaping that is irrigated by Lake Charles, in an accurate statement?
Yes, this should definitely help with the water quality of Lake Charles, which will subsequently help with some of the irrigation that's served out of that for the Greg's Landing, as well as the White Deer Run Golf Course.
But this will eliminate some of the basically slant water that comes to Lake Charles right now.
This project will take steps to solving the cause of the problem, which is the sediment inflow. There is still work to be done to remove some of the sediment in the delta that's being formed at the north end. That was another large expense that wasn't covered under this round of DCEO funding. So, it's, we have a design for it, work that's been done, but it's not, the full dredging of Lake Charles is not included in the project.
No, I understand it. But will that eliminate, I guess, you know, the sidewalks or people getting sprayed with some kind of crazy water out of Lake Charles?
So, no. This won't fully eliminate that issue until a lot of the sediments removed from Lake Charles, but this will stop additional sediment from coming in. So, it'll help to, you know, solve the problem of sediment infiltration, but it won't remove that delta, it won't clear up completely. There will need to be subsequent work.
All right, Chris. Do you have any idea what the HOA is doing in light of this ongoing problem?
I don't, I haven't spoke to them specifically about this.
Okay. And nobody's contacted you?
No.
Okay. So, but as we spoke, we have a, we have a well that we paid for, and it's located actually, is it actually on White Deer Run's property?
So, I know we have a well just north of Lake Charles, on the opposite side of the CV of the park right there. So, just to the northwest of Lake Charles. There's a well, and then it has a, also has a connection to the lake. I have yet to track down information about another well system in the area, but I'm still looking into that.
But the well that we dropped was to drop the water White Deer Run Golf Course?
Yes, I haven't been able to fully find out where the, where White Deer Run Golf Course as well is pulling from. I only know the one right here that's on that access path, just west of the CV, north of Lake Charles, if that's the one that you're referring to.
I'm not sure myself, but...
I'm still working on that one, and as soon as I can get that information, I'll give it to you.
Well, yeah, you know, Chris, again, since we talked about this, just a clarification, on the water from that well, not only watering White Deer Run Golf Course, but is it used by the homeowners association up and down Greg's Parkway? You know what I mean, near the golf course?
Yep. I will get you a definitive answer on that.
Yeah, updated, in all honesty, let's, you know, put it in our newsletter that goes up if anybody wants to read it. But, you know, the reality is, you know, this is something, it's a good thing, and the importance is that, you know, it helps the whole Greg's Landing community, because we don't charge them. Thanks for the water, okay?
Yep.
Are you wearing a hat, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify that, because it's a good thing across the board, and the CV drainage thing is great for Lake Charles.
Mr. Mayor?
We would hate to leave a lake that was dry then.
Back in, Mr. Mayor, Jim Ferro, back in 2008, when I was serving on the HOA board, when the board installed the sprinkler system, you're correct. The village at that time, I remember, we worked with Dave Brown, the village dropped that well, and we ended up, the village allowed us to use water from Lake Charles to use with the sprinkler system to water the parkways. Because the HOA is responsible to keep the parkways watered and all the landscaping on the parkways watered. Because the HOA is in charge of landscaping the parkways and keeping the parkways cut and landscaped throughout the season. So, the village did in fact supply the water supply for the sprinkler system back in maybe '08, '06. So, Mayor, your memory on that is correct.
Well, you know, and the reason, I hate to be historic here, but the reason we did that was because the water and golf course of the site and championship quality of White Deer Run, it cost them, it's a million gallons a night. And God only knows where they pulling out of Lake Charles, where they pulling it, pulling out of Lake Michigan. But Lake Charles would have looked great with no water. So, we dropped the well, and we spent about $200,000. And it was a good thing for the whole Greg's Landing subdivision. Okay, I'm done for now.
All right, and since we're on it, I'll just brief overview on the funding. So, this is the CV ditch project that I'm showing here. This project, we're working through SMC with their final IGA agreements right now. We're hoping to get this awarded in the next couple of months to start early spring. So, some of this project will come out of fiscal '25, the current fiscal year project. The village has $250,000 budgeted. And then the next fiscal year will be the remaining $1.8 million for this project, which will be reimbursed. So, the village is the lead agency, so we need to put the full amount of funding in our budget, because we will be funding it outright, and then we'll be reimbursed by the SMC, or it's DCEO funding via the SMC, as well as the Vernon Hills Park District. We're finalizing an agreement with them right now for their funding portion of the project as well. So, I'll skip back.
This will be a good thing.
Yes, it should definitely help to solve some of the problems that we're having in the Lake Charles and along the CV. So, to go to some of the other fiscal year '26 projects we have in this, the, what I'm showing here is a village entry monument replacement project. So, we have four monuments as you come into the village. Two of them are more substantial. Those are the ones by Melody Farm on Route 60 as you're heading westbound from the highway. The other one is on 83 as you're heading northbound. But then we have two more, which are shown here in the pictures, that are unlike the other two, they're much smaller. So, the one is, if you're heading from, the one on top, from Mundeline, heading eastbound, it's frequently hidden behind vegetation. And the other one is if you're heading southbound from Libertyville, that's on the bottom and in front of Menards. So, we put in the budget this year to reevaluate those village monuments, and proposing to put in something more similar to the other ones we have in the village.
So, the cost is to replace, or the cost is to evaluate?
No, this would be the construction, this would be the cost to do it all. Yes.
For the $8,000, would that actually include any sign replacements?
Yes, that would be everything. That's our estimate for all-in on any, if you want to have some electric to it, any stonework, and any type of monument. So, similar to what we spent in the past one.
What is it, three space, Chris?
We're looking at the two right now. The one on Milwaukee in front of Menards, and then the other one on 60 as you're heading eastbound by the highway, the two smaller ones.
Yeah, okay. But is there anything, okay, so is there anything coming in, I guess, from the west when you leave Mundeline?
Yeah, so the picture on the top of this slide, if you're leaving Mundeline and you're coming from the west, heading eastbound, it's a small sign that's usually hidden throughout most of the year when those shrubs and trees are leafed out.
Yeah, it's the one right by the old silo, Mayor.
Yeah, by the old silo.
Oh, okay. Okay, by the silo. I apologize. Okay. All right. Sounds good.
And the last project I want to highlight here is a Lake Charles Dam restoration. So, the whole southern portion of Lake Charles, you can see I've highlighted with the red circle here, is a dam permitted with Illinois Department of Natural Resources. The bottom picture is just the spillway itself, which has no issues. We get it inspected every year. However, some of the earthen portion of the dam, so part of where the, one of the tees and the golf course is, has started to sink slightly, and we're talking six inches to a foot at the worst areas, just settling over time. And that needs to be brought up to the proper elevation. So, we're currently in design with Christopher Burke to do that work, and working closely with the golf course on the best timing, but we're going to be funding a construction budget for that in the next fiscal year.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
The oval red circle just to the northeast, oh, that's Park District. That little patch of grass right there? So, see the house with the pool and the cul-de-sac?
Uh, yes.
So, in between the red circle and that house, that little patch, who owns that?
I don't know.
You think Park District owns that?
Yeah, the Park District owns that. Is that where you're looking at?
Own to zone one.
Huh. There's your Three Ho golf course.
And Lake Charles?
No.
Is that, it's probably you killing it though? It's part of White Deer Run.
Greg's Landing Outlet.
The Park District doesn't own, you, the Park District doesn't own...
It might be a, I think it might be a Greg's Landing Outlet. Oh, okay.
On the tax parcel, Dutchville Park District over here.
Well, my nurse has proved all you need is 10 acres. That's their slogan, the cradle, the most fun you can have on 10 acres.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
What, what, I don't, what building are we actually talking about?
Building? Wait, I'm, I was referring to this, the dam restoration, to building up the earthen dam in the south end of Lake Charles.
Okay. So, where would there be any, with any Park District property?
I'm not exactly sure what parcel trustee Schenks is referring to.
Do you see the oval, red oval circle?
Roger.
Roger. Just to the northeast of that, there's a patch of land. Park District owns it.
Okay, look at it, the red circle is...
Yeah, yeah, don't worry. Forget it. It's irrelevant. It's irrelevant. I could talk to you offline about it.
But I look to the right?
I'll, I'll call you tomorrow about it, and I'll send you a picture.
All right, great.
All right, so the next section I want to talk about is our village facility improvements. So, you can see this is the five-year overview. The majority of the work on our facilities comes from our three main facilities, the Public Works Building, the Village Hall, and the Police Campus. One item to note, as was presented to the board earlier this year, there is some, a study being performed on the Police Campus. None of what we're showing in the five-year program is taking anything into account. From the results of that study, we're showing just the recommended maintenance and repair based on systems reaching the end of their useful life. So, just as a caveat to what we have here. I wanted to highlight some of the significant, there's several projects on the full five-year plan, but some of the more significant out-year projects. So, before I get into next year, you can see the first one here, Village Hall. This is out in the fifth year. The roof is hitting the end of its useful life. We inspect that and do maintenance work every year. But this is an item that will be coming down the pipeline, which is, was a fairly significant hit, as well as the comm center on the Police Campus, the next line down. That roof has also reached the end of its life and will need replaced. The next item is the, in the main Police Operations Building, that boiler that they have will need to be replaced as well. We did a replacement project on the boiler in the comm center last year, or two years ago, if the board remembers, and so this one is reaching the end of its life as well. On the public works side, we are currently, in our current budget, which is another item that we'll bring to the board in the next couple of months, is some architectural work at our Public Works Building. But I'm showing a construction funding... But I'm showing a construction funding a year out for some storage bin expansion, where we're kind of hit the end of, we need more covered storage for some of our materials. So you can see, we have several open bins here. We also need to put doors on our salt, salt bin to, to protect from any, any of that salt leaving the building. So that's what that, that funding is. And the last one I'm showing here is fuel system replacement. So in, in year two and year three of the five-year program, year two would be a design and year three would be the reconstruction of our fuel islands. So the, the underground storage tank has reached the end of its useful life and we're also seeing an increased amount of maintenance issues on the pumps and the surface system. So that is a, a major expense that's going to be coming at, at the Public Works Facility in the next several years. Now to jump into next fiscal year's projects. So you can see the, this is just an overview of the different facilities. We'll start with Village Hall. We're, we're putting funding in for ADA improvements to the entry pavers. We're getting a lot of issues maintaining these pavers out front. We're also getting some complaints from some of our users. You, you can even see in the picture, we've had to do some maintenance work shaving down the curbs because the, the heave of, of these bricks is causing trip hazards out here. I would say it's not very common to pave main pathways in, in these brick pavers for facilities like this. So the plan would be to go to an all concrete entryway. Now, I have put in the budget $150,000. That would be more than just, we could just go to remove the planters, which are also having a lot of issues and some issues restricting the, the tree health with their, their size of the bin is, sorry, of the planter is hurting those. So we would remove those, we could just replace it all with concrete and we're looking at more of a $40,000, $50,000 project. But I wanted to fund, putting in the draft budget here, $150,000, just so we have some options if the, the board wants to re-envision what our entryway would look like. We could hire a landscape architect to maybe come up with some concepts that would include some other hardscaping, some other design there, but there, there is the option of just the, the bare minimum. So any feedback the board would have on that, I'd be, be happy to take into account. The next item on the, the budget is monument sign replacement out here in the front of Village Hall. We are seeing a lot of deterioration on the, the, it's a metal structure, it's rusted through and falling apart, so it needs to be replaced. The LED sign that we have out there is in, in fine condition, but we got some quotes on what it would be to, to change it out to the same as what we have at Public Works and the Police Department all have the same sign design like you see up here. So we wanted to put funding to, to, it would, you would keep the same display that's out there and just have a modified housing to match our other two facilities. Again, happy to, to get any feedback or thoughts from the board on that. In the final Village Hall project I want to touch on is the siding replacement. We're having some, getting some water intrusion issues with the siding over here, the cedar siding. So we need to remove that, do some work behind the wall and then replace it with, with new siding. So that's the other project for, for Village Hall. The next up's the Arbor Theater. We are seeing a lot of issues with the, the retaining walls around the ponds. You can see the Rosetta Stone on the picture on the left is, is falling apart, falling in. We're also getting a lot of erosion in the, the picture on the right. So what we want to do is, is get a consultant that can give us a design for the best repair methods for that or, or future wall installations. And then, so next year would just be doing a condition study on that and coming up with a, a plan for, or for a way to repair that or phase in those repairs over the next several In the last building I wanted to go through is Public Works. So the first item we have on here is to repair the, the floor drains. We're, you can see in this picture, getting a lot of concrete deterioration, so those all need to be changed out. I guess I'll add for, for a couple of these, we are, again, I, I mentioned earlier with the bins, we're going to be hiring an architect this year to start going through and developing some plans for that, and this is the construction funding for projects that we're planning to work on in the, over the next several months. The other one is our overhead doors. We have eight doors at, at Public Works that the motors are going out, so we need to replace all those. We also, our, our locker room is the original locker room when this building was built back in the seventies, and so it can use some replacement to some of these fixtures, to the flooring and, and the shower area. And the last one is our, our electrical panel. We've had to make some repairs this year and so we want to fund a little more, a, a larger replacement of some of the switches within that, that system. So with that, the next steps over the next couple of months, receive any feedback that the board may have on this project list. And then when we come back in March, we'll present the final, the, the final 2025, 2026 capital improvement program to the board. I'd be happy to take any questions or feel free to reach out over the, you know, the next several weeks with any feedback you may have on any of these projects.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
I got a question.
Sure.
What are we gonna, we, I think we talked about this, but we haven't, you know, arrived at, you know, any conclusion. Indian Creek, when it, it runs, you know, I have to speak through the Golf Course, then it runs through, you know, certain Park District property and, but it runs north of Prairie, Buffalo Grove Road.
Yes.
There's issues, especially I think at the southeast end of that, where there's a lot of trees and other sediment and debris that actually affect the flow of Indian, Indian Creek, where we really get a bad rain, okay? So are we gonna look at that at all?
Yeah, so my, my thoughts on that is that, you know, there are several issues, several waterway problems that we have in this village and we're, we're going to have to continue to fund a, a portion of our capital program to addressing these. Right now, this, this CV ditch project is, is taking priority. That was one that was, has been in the, in the plan for, I believe, seven years since we started originally, since Dave Brown started looking at the issues going on in Lake Charles. You know, being a major feature in the village, that's where the focus has been. Like we, we talked, touched on earlier, there's still some issues, some sediment that could be dredged out, as well as several other projects. I think we identified over $10 million worth of projects, both within the villages and the Park District's jurisdiction, within Big and Little Bear Lake, along the CV and Lake Charles. So that, that's been the primary focus, but the, the next step, the Indian Creek is not far behind in our thoughts. So I think it's a matter of continuing to evaluate where the biggest problems are, continue to keep an eye out for funding sources, because these are multimillion dollar projects that span several jurisdictions. I know that's one of the big issues with Indian Creek is we don't own a lot of the property, so it would be several agreements, working in conjunction with, with Buffalo, Village of Buffalo Grove, getting access from all the property owners that, that own those properties adjacent to it. So I, we don't have anything funded, any studies or, or projects right now, because my, my thought is we have a, a backlog of, of projects that have already been designed to a conceptual level in the CV, CV ditch, but it'll be definitely something we're keeping an eye on.
Yeah, you know what, Chris, in all honesty, you know, we had like some cra- crazy, you know, not a hundred-year rain, but probably a 500-year rain, where, you know, all of a sudden, the streets were flooding in, in Hawthorne Club, but not crazy where they were approaching the houses. But, you know, but it was tied in to the CV, you know, not properly, you know, draining and handling, you know, a big, big, big storm, you know? So, yeah, it's okay. Nobody fought it out and that's extremely important. But, yeah, with this project, you're right, there's multiple jurisdictions involved, so... But, okay. I just wanted to ask you about it.
Yep. No, it's, it's definitely something we'll, we'll keep our eye on.
Any other questions, concerns on the, anything on this capital improvement from Do we have, need a closed session, no closed session? All right. All right. Anybody got anything else? Otherwise, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn committee of all.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion, a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holiday.
Happy holidays.